This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lassen.
Here.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Corning.
Here.
Commissioner Berlin. Commissioner Bartel. And Chair Piper.
Here. Would you all please rise and join me in saying our pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking at our agenda, we have no minutes. We have a little bit of business to transact this evening. That's the election of a vice chair. Oh, before we do that, we have some new members. And so, why don't we start with Deb? Tell us briefly who you are and how you got here.
Well, my name is Deb Bartel, and I'm currently the practice administrator for Woodburn P.D. Magic Clinic. And I've lived in Woodburn since 2006, but until last year, I worked in Portland. So I spent three hours on the road. And now I'm spending that three hours I don't have to spend on the road learning more about my town, and I love it here. So when this opportunity came up, I thought it would be a great way to put both feet in. So here I am.
Okay, I'm Lisa Ellsworth, and I was on the planning commission about nine years ago. And then I spent eight years on the Woodburn City Council. And I'm back on the planning commission. I really enjoyed being on the planning commission. I work for the state of Oregon during the day in the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. So that's the group that brings education to Oregonians.
Thank you. Anyway, now, the little bit of business that we have to do is the election of a vice chair. I will open nominations for a vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Ellsworth.
Are there any other nominations? I will close nominations. All those in favor of the southbound SP and voting for Lisa Ellsworth as vice chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there any business from the audience that isn't otherwise on our agenda this evening? Are there any communications?
Only related to the land use project you're going to be working on later.
Okay. In that case, I will open the public hearing for the Basie project, which includes a design review, 2107, street exception, 2103, preliminary partition, 2101, property line adjustment, 2101, riparian corridor and wetlands overlay district permit, 2103, and several variances, 2102. A proposed five-story, 3.8 million square foot e-commerce distribution center located Butteville Road, south of OR 219 and west of the existing Winco Food Distribution Center. The first thing I will do is ask the commission, are there any declarations, any potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, site visits? Let me start by saying a project of this magnitude in a city our size creates a lot of interest and conversations. And I have had a number of what I would term "social conversations" about this. And, but I would also say, because I think it's impossible not to, but I also would say that I don't think in any way will these conversations affect my ability to make a clear and honest judgment this evening.
Well, I've had occasional, you know, moments of discussing it, but, you know, more like you said, "social." I drove by the site, and that's about all.
I too have casual conversations and go by the site as well.
I've had a few casual conversations, most of the time ending with me saying, "I'm sorry, I can't talk about that right now." Because that's what Chris told me when he introduced the department of community to me. You know, I can't think of anything that I've heard or said that would cause me to sway in any different way.
Well, COVID's made it really easy for me not to have any ex parte conversations. So I must be one of the few that have not discussed this at all, except for tonight. On my way here, my significant other said, "Are they going to talk about that tonight?" And I'm like, "Yeah, I think so."
Are there any challenges to the commission? Hearing none. So who drew the short straw to read the public hearing statement? Is that you, Chris?
It was indeed. Good evening. Both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi-judicial land use hearings, such as this one, and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this statement is read to all persons in attendance. First of all, the applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. And I'm going to cite the code sections that are going to be discussed. WDO Section 2.04, Section 2.05.02, 2.05.05, Section 2.05.06, Section 3.01, 3.02, Section 3.03, 3.04, 3.05, 3.06, 3.07, 3.08, as well as Sections 4.01.07, 5.01.08, 5.01.09, Sections 5.02.05, 5.03.02, and 5.03.12. The hearing will proceed in the following order, and this is identified on the chart that we put up there for the public to see. We're going to hear a staff report. There'll be an opportunity for the applicant's presentation. We'll receive testimony from the public, so anyone who wants to speak, you can speak at that time either in favor of the application, then we'll have testimony in opposition to the application. There will be opportunity for the applicant to have a rebuttal. And then at that point, the record will be closed. After that, there will be deliberation by the commission and ultimately a decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or a land use regulation that the person believes to apply to the decision. In other words, you have to speak, and any comments you make are to be directed towards specific criteria of our code. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any person wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is open. That concludes the statement.
Thank you. And we'll proceed to the staff report. Before we do the presentation, I just want to make sure the folks on the call can see the PowerPoint screen. Someone please confirm that.
I can see the project on the call.
Very good. Thank you. So as we described briefly, this is Project Basie. It's also known as... It's specifically, there's a design review and exception. That's a street exception request. The PAR is a partition. PLA is a property line adjustment. ARQUAD stands for riparian corridor wetland overlay district. And then we have variances. And I'm going to discuss these in detail during my staff report. And I'm Chris Kerr. I apologize, I'm the community development director. Should have introduced myself. So the specific issue for the planning commission tonight is the design review, variances, exception to street right-of-way improvements, the ARQUAD, and then the PAR and the PLA. These are being consolidated as a one application coming before the planning commission, which is what we call a type-three application. That means that the decision makes... The decision is made by the planning commission on type-three applications. Ultimately, if the decision is appealed, it would go to the city council. The staff report and file, along with any information added tonight, and there is two pieces of information that we added tonight. I want to make sure that one of the council has them. One's an exhibit, and the other's a letter from someone from the public. Those are all entered into the record officially. And just summarizing how we got here from the... In your staff report. Sorry. The details are in the staff report, which is Attachment 102, under analysis and findings. Covers all the regulations, all the criteria, covers the evidence presented and recommendations from staff. I'm not going to go into each of those in detail. I'm going to cover the highlights of the staff report and the criteria this evening. It's part of my presentation. Kind of bringing you into the site, make sure we all understand where it's at. So the property's a total of 130 acres. The site's located here, highlighted in yellow. This is I-5. This is the interchange. This is 219. It comes in, this is the bend on 219 that swings in, and this is Butteville Road and that connection point. Heading further south, PAR would be just off the map to the south. And this is, again, just to get your bearings, this is Woodland. There we go. This is Woodland Avenue that swings around at this location. And next door is Do-It-Best and Winco. Again, just to kind of get our bearings as to where we're at. Took a picture, or have a video, or pardon me, a photo of the site that I got from Google Maps from June 2019. As you can see, it's a farm. It's been a farm for a long time. Looking off into the distance, you can get a feel for, that's the Winco property building. You can just see I-5 on this side. If you're looking a little bit to the right, this would be looking east. And it gives you a feel for existing Butteville Road. It's a county road. There's no improvements off the asphalt. Now, this particular property has a few constraints on it and what I can kind of consider site challenges. And I wanted to point a few of them out before I get into the details because they're really relevant to the application. Particularly, I know a lot of you are familiar with the intersection of Butteville Road and 219. The biggest issue, I think, financially for making this project developable is the fact that that intersection, I have a couple pictures here of it. That intersection hasn't been improved and had improvements done to it for, honestly, it's been probably 20 years since there's been any kind of improvements here beyond just some ordinary striping. This is a very dangerous intersection. It's been recognized as such by ODOT, the county, and the city. In effect, ODOT controls 219. The county has the sort of west side here. And the city owns the southeast, is the jurisdiction for the southeast corner. This is a view I have on the bottom of the screen if you're looking westbound. So as you come here and you want to go south on Butteville, you need to cross this road to go south onto Butteville Road while cars are coming south on this road. And of course, people coming north on Butteville, if you're traveling northbound on Butteville and you want to make either a right or a left, you come to a full stop and you have to make this. I can see someone here making this sort of tricky left-hand turn to get out here. There's obvious visibility issues, and there's no improvements out there that have happened in a long time. This is a significantly failing intersection. It's not just bad in terms of capacity. There are significant safety issues here, and there have been a lot of accidents. I think the other big site constraint here is the riparian corridor, which is essentially the creek, which is the wetland. There's a floodplain that runs through here. I've identified generally where Seneca Creek runs through this property. We are up in the sort of northwest corner of the property. This is the intersection we were just looking at. This is a pretty well-maintained wetland. It's in very good shape. And that's why there's an ARQUAD requirement for this application. I'll jump ahead a little bit. The applicant's not proposing any improvements or development within that ARQUAD area. And we'll get to that more in detail in a second. What's a little bit unusual about this property, and probably more so than any other site that I've worked on here in the city, is this development has been anticipated and planned for industrial development, particularly large lot, high employment industrial uses, for a long time. And I want to talk about some of that history and how we got to this point. It's part of our interchange management area. And the map that I have up here, the property we're talking about is here listed as A and B. This would be I-5. This is the interchange right here. When the interchange was built, which was a $70 million project, I'm looking at Dan for help, a $70 million project. One of the things that happened was there was a real concern that the capacity that was built into it, in other words, they added capacity by putting in these investments in the interchange, would get used up and wouldn't be available for some of these industrial uses that's around here. So this IMA, this interchange management area, was adopted. It's approved, it's part of our zoning map, it's part of our zoning code. And one of the things that it does is identifies and allocates certain amount of trips that are allocated to each of these areas, each of these what we call "subareas." These subareas are basically vacant lots at the time, vacant commercial and industrial lots. And the idea was to protect and preserve those, to make sure they were available. Part of the reason for building out the improvement side here for $70 million was so the city's interest was to make sure that there were employment opportunities being created in that area. And that really leads to one of the... Another function of the IMA was that it's really very much a type of reimbursement district. The city put approximately $8 million of city money into the I-5 interchange improvement. But because these surrounding properties that were vacant were going to be the principal beneficiaries of that increased capacity because the interchange was being expanded, one of the requirements is that with this IMA that was created, this interchange management area that was adopted, is that as these properties develop, in this case, let's say A and B develop, they need to pay an additional fee on top of a standard transportation fee. It's an additional fee. In this case, for this property, it's going to be approximately $1.3 million. That money goes directly back into, essentially paying the city back for the investments that the city made into that, into the I-5 interchange. So what that kind of leads into is not just some additional SDCs, but I'm going to talk in a moment about that overlay district, which is what this interchange management area. There are some other provisions in our zoning code that lead to it. But it gets, again, to this idea that how the city was planning, I wanted to utilize the increased capacity and improvements that happened here at the interchange to serve these developments, as long as they were providing these large lot industrial uses out there. Another part to that was the UGB expansion. The UGB expansion is the urban growth boundary expansion. The city worked for at least 15 years, Bob's hair is a lot grayer, from working on that UGB expansion. It took a long time for the city to get. And again, one of the key components of that UGB expansion, I have a... This is a... This is the actual adopted ordinance that expanded our UGB out to this line that you see, which is the sort of line in the sand that was drawn. The city worked hard to expand our UGB so that we could, in the future, add areas such as this big blue swath of industrial land that you see here, which becomes, we wind up calling it the SWR, the Southwest Industrial Reserve. This was a real sticking point as part of the UGB because that's, as you know, active farmland, and it was for a long time. The city thought it was important, and this part of the big negotiation that went on with getting that UGB expanded so that the city could add industrial land on this piece of land and these other two parcels, or these other parcels to the south, was that we adopt this SWR overlay district, which kind of protects these lands for these large lot industrial uses. This is really unique. We don't have too many of these. I'm certain I haven't worked on a development within the SWR since I've been here. But there is a lot of history to this and sort of how we got here. Some of it's tied to not just the SWR, but the UGB expansion. And there's associated comprehensive plan amendments that were completed at that time, again, to ensure that we were getting, this was going to be developed as industrial in the future. Then in 2017, after the UGB, the property owner annexed the city into the property. It was designated SWR, that Southwest Industrial Reserve. It's just what it sounds like, it's to reserve those areas for industrial uses. They found, they delineated the ARQUAD out there, the wetlands and the floodplain. They formally put them on the site. They were outlined and approved. No activity happened out there at the time, so they essentially lost that approval. That's why they're coming back again for it. There was no development approval at that time. It was simply an annexation for the sole purpose of greasing the skid so that this property could come in in the future with a specific site and just go through the site plan approval process, which is where you are now. As part of that, there's a Butteville Road agreement that we entered into with the county. This line that you see here was very, very important for Thousand Friends and people at the county. And this, the line in the sand, this is a real line that exists. And one of the things that came out of it was there is an intergovernmental agreement that exists between the city and the county about how we're going to treat Butteville Road. And that directly impacts this project. One of the things that it calls for is that the west side of Butteville Road be maintained as a rural farm road. In other words, it not be upgraded to kind of urban standards that we have here in the city. But the east side should be. So as development happens, like the one you're going to do, we're going to talk about tonight, on the east side of the street, it needs to meet city code requirements, city street standards, everything from drainage to sidewalks to landscaping. On the west side, there aren't any. And that's deliberate, and it's called out by not just the IGA, but that's part of the approval and the process that we went through to get here. So again, it's still a bit of an unusual process, project, and there's some pieces to the end. Those things in themselves are a bit odd, but at the end of the day, it's essentially just a site plan review with variances on top of it. But this is what gives, makes it a little bit convoluted. I'm going to read quickly what that SWR zone is intended for. This is the zoning district. It's intended to protect suitable industrial sites near I-5 for the exclusive use of targeted industries identified. By the way, this is one of them. And 2016, and the 2016 targeted industries analysis. This broad objective is accomplished by master planning, retention of large industrial parcels, and restricting non-industrial uses. We wouldn't accept or certainly recommend approval of modifying this site to anything other than these large industrial uses, these large lot industrial uses. That's what this area is intended for. In fact, there is a SWR master plan that was adopted at the time of the annexation. That SWR master plan looks at the whole southwest area of the city and says, "How are we going to provide public services here, water, sewer, storm, traffic?" And this plan is consistent with that as well. So a lot of planning went into creating the site plan that came before. That's the short answer to how we got here. So that's where we sit now. So here's the site. It includes everything you see in red on the west side. Again, this, on this, to the east to be the Winco, this is Do-It-Best on the north. It includes these overlay districts. It's the ARQUAD overlay district. It's zoned SWR, and it's part of that IMA overlay district. I want to talk for a second about some of the individual components of the application. In this case, the PLA and the PAR. That's the partition. This creates the lots that allow it to be developed. It's a total of 130 acres. The applicant's proposing to essentially turn this using a PLA and then a partition to create three new distinct parcels, 1, 2, 3. The Basie parcel, this is what's going to be subject to the design review. This is the piece that's going to have all the development activity happening on. All right? So most of the discussion's going to be about this central parcel number two. There's no development proposed with parcel A. I'm going to, I'll talk about some details on it. And that's where the wetland area is. And to the south, while it's going to be separated as a new parcel, there's no development proposed at this time on that parcel. When they come in to develop it, they'll be subject to all of our site plan requirements and any other requirements they have to go through. I've carved in here, you're going to see, and we'll talk about, this is a future right-of-way, and we're going to talk about the future alignment, or realignment to this proposed Butteville Road. That's why this odd road carved in this way. Let's talk about the design review a little bit. This is the actual site plan review that we go through. Again, I'm looking just basically at the Basie parcel, parcel two. I'm going to show you in more detail about how this Butteville realignment takes place with this new roundabout. I have some more detailed plans of it. I'll get to that in a moment. I just wanted you to get a feel for where this building sits. And I think it's kind of instructed to see its scale and size compared to what's around it. This is a 105-foot-tall building. It is tall, but the footprint of the building, in terms of its size on the ground, is, well, much smaller than Winco. It's much closer to the Do-It-Best building. Those buildings are about, at least the Winco buildings, we think about 45 feet, 40 feet. I'll talk about some of the details on the site plan here in a second. Again, I flipped it a little bit. I flipped it on its side. So north is to the right. This is the Winco building. You can see their existing footprint in here. This is the proposed building on this Basie property, parcel two. And as part of this proposal is to realign Butteville Road that currently runs along here. I have another graphic that shows a little better. To swing it around and bring that road through here, through this roundabout. It essentially resolves the issues of the safety and capacity issues that existed at that existing Butteville Road and 219 intersection without having to destroy the wetland or impact any of the property owners to the north or to the west. There was going to be a lot of right-of-way. A lot of right-of-way would have to be purchased to redevelop, put a light or a traffic circle in at the existing Butteville and 219 intersection. What the applicant's done is essentially pulled that interchange and pulled it onto their property to, into the south. Ultimately, that'll be dedicated. A few details on the plan. Again, 3.85 million square feet, distribution and e-commerce facility on 82 of those overall acres. The use is permitted in this district. It's one of the permitted uses in the SWR, consistent with the comprehensive plan as well. It's a five-story structure that's approximately 105. I say approximately because they're a bit under 105 feet, but I think it's usually safe to put that, a few extra feet in there for the variance so that we don't have a headache at the end of the day when the building footprint comes in. The applicant talked a little bit about the building, the story height, and why each story is so large, and some of the interior operations that they have. It's a bit unusual to have five stories and 100 feet. And they're expected to have two daily shifts of 937 people per shift. They can talk more about the shifts. My understanding is the way it would operate is, it's not that everybody blows a whistle and everybody walks out the door at the same time. There's a big overlap that takes almost a couple of hours for that shift to happen. So there's still a peak hour that happens, and there's still a shift change, but it's not at one exact time. Oops, excuse me. Having trouble with the wheel on my mouse. Just a quick look at setbacks. It's a big building, but it's also a very large site. The front setback along Butteville Road's over 200 feet. The east and rear setbacks next to the Winco, about 245. And to the south, all the way down in this direction, which would be towards I-5, it's 825 feet just to the property line for parcel three. So it's a big property. Four driveways, it's going to be accessible through four driveways. They're all off Butteville Road. I've kind of highlighted them along here. I didn't call it out, but this is their large storm facility that they're proposing on the north part of the property. This is the wetland area on the opposite side of the street. That's parcel one. The wetland doesn't cover the entire parcel. It's about 2/3 of that parcel, I would say. Ultimately, what'll happen with stormwater is it's held here, it's detained onsite, and then treated as before it's released. And it's released so that the post... What's the right phrase? Can you get this right? The, I always, I always get it wrong. I should probably rely on the engineer to get it. Yeah, the post-development release of the water would be either better or no worse than what it is out there today. And of course, the water will be treated because there's treatment of having it onsite. So the difference is, all of the impervious areas are going to have the water come into here. It'll be held onsite, and it won't be released at one time. It'll be released slowly and over time, based on whatever the engineering report shows. I wanted to give you an idea of kind of how truck movements work around the site. There's two guardhouses. The first one's on the south side here. Trucks will come in through the southern entrance, or the southern driveway, pardon me. Come into the site, there's a guardhouse here, so they get into the back of the building. This area back here is all secured, and they'll exit here on the north driveway. These interior driveways are more for employees to come in. Some employees can use this one as well, but this is principally for truck traffic, and then truck traffic will exit out of this one. There's a guardhouse on either end. The area in the back's secured areas for truck storage. These are all truck loading bays. There are a lot, and they're on the east and north side of the building. Again, the area highlighted back here is all, these are the secured areas behind fencing on the opposite side of the detention facility. And I wanted to point out, at the bottom, this is where Woodland Avenue comes in. We'll talk about that in a second. So Woodland stubs out here, it just ends right now. It's a stub street. And it was very important for the fire department to have a secondary access into the building. So while the street's not going to continue through, there will be an aux box here so that the fire department can have access here in an emergency to serve the building. It'll only be for emergency use. So Woodland's being used right now for construction purposes because obviously, none of these improvements have happened out here on Butteville Road yet. But once that's complete, Woodland will not be used by the, any trucks or any employees.[1789.88] But once that's complete, Woodland will not be used by the, uh, any trucks or any employees. It would only be used for emergency services by the fire department. Uh, again, I'll point out employee visitor parking is a little over eighteen hundred parking spaces proposed beyond the north, I'm sorry, on the south and west side of the building. Give you an idea of the, what the building looks like and some of the massing. We have guidelines for our industrial district. This proposal generally meets some, talks about articulation of the roof line, some color, but you can't have too much color. This is generally consistent with those guidelines. This is sort of what the, the entrance along the west side looks like if you were on Butteville Road. And this is where the drop-off areas for, are for employees. There's a drop-off area with a little covered drop-off area, the few turnouts. Um, and this is where people come in and come into work and we'll show you, I'll show you in a second. Some of these are little outdoor areas for people to, or snack and smoke breaks. Oh, here, I'm sorry. I actually have them here. These covered entry areas are at the front of the building. So people can come out here, um, get air, take their break, um, read a book, whatever they like to do. Some of that's covered. That's gonna be important in a second because that requires a variance request. I can talk briefly about the arc quad. Again, this is the environmentally sensitive area in the northwest corner of the site. Pretty short and simple. It's already been delineated. We know where it is. Um, we have the, uh, we know the parameters of it. It's pretty well defined. And it is a, it's, it's a very, it's a highly functioning well and some are in better shape than others. This one's in very good condition. The applicant's not proposing any development, um, at this time, and there's some conditions we have which are pretty typical for maintenance agreements in there because that's actually also axes there. That's the Seneca Creek, so that's also a storm facility. Now we're gonna talk a little bit about the variances that have been submitted. I'm gonna start with these three. I'm gonna focus in on them and then I'm gonna spend more time talking about some of the roadway improvements around the property. I'll, let's start with the first one, uh, this maximum building height. Right now in the SWAR, we allow forty-five foot building height, seventy for non-habitable spaces. Those are usually towers, water, water towers, these kinds of things. They're proposing a hundred and five. Giving you a feel again for what that looks like on the street level on an elevation. And is this, yeah, additionally, uh, the applicant provided this and I think it's a very helpful graphic. This is looking at the sightline. So this is a profile picture. So imagine this is sort of eyeball level. The idea here is if a person were standing here that were six foot tall and they were standing at the property line looking towards the building that was built. If this is the propos- this is the actual building and it were built and it's set back a little over two hundred feet from the property line, this is the sort of, the, uh, field of vision that you would have as you look towards that building. That's the angle it'll be as you're looking out towards it. If you were to put a comparable forty-five foot building, which is allowed under the code, I think it's good to look at how far back that forty-five foot building would be. Because that's really the saying, this is a good way to measure how, what the scale of a tall building is depending how far away it is from you. In this case, that forty-five foot building would be a hundred and twenty feet from the property line. So in other words, if, if this building were any closer than a hundred and twenty feet, it would appear taller to anybody six foot tall standing at the street than this hundred foot building. And just to point out another fact, the front setback requirement in the SWAR district is ten feet. So a forty-five foot building is actually allowed to be ten feet from a property line. That's, we don't see that very often, but again, it's certainly something you could do. And if you put your parking and the rest behind, that's the kind of thing we could see one day. Now, the fact that it's set back really far into the site, the fact that there's some articulation in the building, I think diminishes that building height issue because it's certainly unusual to have a hundred and five foot tall building, um, on any piece of property. Now, this is a huge piece of property and the setbacks are, have gone back pretty far. But staff added an additional condition of approval in there to help soften and mitigate the impacts of that tall building. And the condition reads that within, it's condition number seventeen, within twenty feet of the right of way. They're to plant large-sized canopy trees at a rate of one per thirty feet on center. That's the rate of trees. That's the number of trees they would have along there. Uh, they need three different species planted. Uh, at least one of them shall be, uh, coniferous or green. And they shall provide additional shrubs that in N C of one planting unit for every twenty square feet excluding trees. Planting unit's sort of a, uh, a name, a terminology that we use under our code. What it means is you're gonna have to plant much thicker, denser shrubs as well as the additional trees. So there's gonna be a, a much thicker, lusher shrubs along the property line, within twenty feet of the property line, as well as more trees than we typically require. And we wanted to put some variety in the species. And the last one just allows them to move, move the trees around a little bit to accommodate things like sight vision and, uh, those issues, but they can't drop the overall number. We think with those mitigations that the staff believes that the, the additional heights is, um, certainly warranted and can be mitigated. Another variance is for the separation between structures, particularly accessory structures. Uh, there's a minimum six-foot separation between accessory structures. This comes almost directly out of the building code and it's basically based on fire issues. You don't want structures to be too close together, um, because they catch on fire. And there's different variants, ways you can get out of it depending on how you build them. Their request is to put metal canopy structures, now the ones we looked at before, in their break areas to be closer than six feet to the building. Here they are again. Staff supports these. Building department supports them. Uh, the fire department doesn't have any issues. These are essentially metal buildings. They could certainly be tied back in and touch the actual building, but then there's issues with getting into the facade. Now you're drilling into it. It caused, it, I'm just telling you over time, that typically causes, um, all kinds of, uh, maintenance issues for people. So their preference is to keep it not full six feet away because then people would have to walk in the rain to get to it, but to bring it a little bit off the building. It's not an issue for staff and again, it's typically a fire issue. In this case, it wouldn't be. Another variance is for the loading spaces. Our code has a very, I think, peculiar requirement. Our loading spaces are, we require loading spaces. These are areas that we typically have to stripe around buildings, usually retail buildings and industrial buildings. We wanna make sure, they want to make sure that they have some and they're not using, say, the street for their loading areas. That can be a problem. In this case, just because of the scale of the project, they're required to have a minimum of seventy-nine loading spaces. Now, in fact, they have seventy, which is actually a lot just because of the nature of their use. Five of those, including five doors on top of that. But staff doesn't believe that there's gonna be any issues. The fact that I, we believe they sort of have a better understanding for their operational needs and how many loading spaces they need. And that is a very big number. I think it just jumped up because of the scale of the project. And we base it on the square footage of your project for our loading area. I'd be much more concerned if there were no loading zones proposed on a ten thousand square foot. Now, I wanna talk about the last couple of variances that are related to street improvements and roadways. They deal with the extension of woodland and improvements along boundary streets. I'm gonna flip to the next page because I think it's really worth walking through these. So I'm gonna walk you through because I wanna look at, I think it's important to look at the fact that because they're building a brand-new realigned Butteville Road and a newly designed, roundabout, and they're not gonna continue a road through here, I wanna talk about exactly what it is they're proposing. And I can talk about how it fits into our code. And I'm gonna break them down into pieces. So again, we talked about this. There's a new realignment for Butteville Road. Butteville currently comes south after, of course, there's a stop right here where people come up at that strange turn. So right now, so the proposal is to bring them around, realign it back onto the property. I say onto the property. This will ultimately be right of way, obviously. So to bring it back through the roundabout so they can continue south. We don't have a spec sheet for roundabouts in, in the city. We don't have any other roundabouts. And it's a, it's just one of these very unique kind of layouts and uses. The applicant provided this. This is a much better detailed drawing of how it works. You can see it means bringing traffic here, having it swing around here. Sure, if you're going southbound on Butteville Road and you wanna continue southbound, you come around the same turn we have today. And here you'll see that there's actually a, I call sort of a hot right where you get to come to the right and you don't actually enter into the roundabout. You stay to the right and you swing south. So you would come in, swing to the south and head down Butteville Road to continue to, on your way down Butteville South, southbound. If you're heading westbound on two nineteen, you're heading in this direction. Again, there's a, uh, you stay to the right-hand side, you come on this end and you can swing around to the top and continue through. Obviously, you don't have the issues with people stopping that you have at a, at a signal. The applicant can talk more about details of the roundabout. Just to give you an idea, as you're looking at this, some of these are, these are the turns, or these are the little chicanes that are put in here to have pedestrians enter and exit at the right spot for visibility reasons, so that they can get in and out of this. So if a pedestrian's walking here, they can cross at this point, come over here and cross here so that there's more visibility. This also accommodates bike lanes. Bike lanes are proposed, uh, existing right now in two nineteen. They'll continue the bike lanes and the sidewalks. Same on Butteville Road to the south. We'll have bike lanes and sidewalks and this will accommodate the bike lanes, all the bikes and pedestrians as well. Essentially what happens is the bikes get pulled off onto a widened sidewalk so that they can go around the roundabout and then they get dropped back into the bike lane where it comes back into place. So they're not, they're not interfacing with the people in the roundabout. That's how the bikes are addressed. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. So staff's very supportive of the roundabout idea. ODOT has given preliminary approval for it. They still have to go through final design with them. Roundabouts are pretty rare for ODOT as well, so they have to go through their process also. The county's issue, uh, um, provided their support for it as well. Now, we have a condition that we put on. It's condition number eleven to address one of the concerns we had, which is says that the applicant shall work with ODOT to determine if the existing eastbound left turn lanes into the driveway serving five single-family homes can accommodate a U-turn at the Woodland Avenue signal. I'm gonna go back for a second and show you what I'm talking about. So one of the downsides of this roundabout is that if you can see, this is an actual median that runs along here. And it means that if someone's coming out of this driveway, which serves, I think, five homes on the north side, this is a private driveway. They wouldn't be able to, to come in and make a left turn to get back into their house. So staff has put a condition on to have them work and, and submit a, uh, let me see how the exact language reads. Let me read it again. I'm sorry. Work with their ODOT to determine if the existing left turn lanes can accommodate a U-turn at the Woodland Avenue signal. If it's viable and approvable by ODOT, and we think that it would be, we don't have a reason to believe that it wouldn't be approvable. The ODOT shall provide for that modification to allow it. What that would mean is it would mean that people who wanted to make a left-hand turn to get into their driveway here on two nineteen, they could have a U-turn and a safe route to get back in. Alright, this is probably the most adversely impacted, uh, group of people, um, from the roundabout. Obviously, a lot of people are gonna benefit from it. And it moves it off of this issue and, which would have meant, again, picking up a lot of right of way around this area and impacting a lot of single-family homes as well as the wetland. But it was a real concern for staff. So we wanna make sure that they work with ODOT to get that U-turn and accommodate it in there so that people can get back there. Another condition of approval is condition of approval twenty that staff's recommended. And this is something that we talked to the applicant about, and this is something that I'll be frank, it, it sort of came from me as it, just an opportunity as it arose. The applicant volunteered it. They were happy to contribute this. I really felt like this is gonna become a gateway for the city. As you're coming eastbound on two nineteen, this is really the entrance now into west, into, pardon me, into Woodburn. So one of the conditions says that the roundabout center shall be landscaped with at least four trees. The concern was that they were gonna work through ODOT and this would be flat pavement, concrete and frankly, very, very unappealing. Uh, the other is to have the applicant pay a, pay the city a civic art fee of ten thousand dollars to provide for a public art project within or near the roundabout. Again, this is really an opportunity. I kinda hate to see the city miss it. I think the applicant was on board, thought the same thing. And again, they're volunteering this money as part of their, uh, approval. And the other was to either construct a city entrance sign to be located within the roundabout or pay the city a fee in lieu so that we could work it out. And the idea is there would be an, an entrance sign into the city would say whatever it's gonna say for, you've now arrived in, uh, City Woodburn and then we can put some kind of art fixture in there. And the city has an art mural committee. It's just a kind of thing they can work on for how that would look. This gives us a little bit of money, puts it as a condition, helps kick that and get it started. Another associated condition of approval is number nineteen. And this is the idea that the applicant shall construct off-street sidewalks, landscaping improvements on both sides of two nineteen. Specifically on the south side, connecting those roundabout improvements to the existing sidewalk at the do-it-best and on the north side of Willow. And I have a little description of where this is. So this pro- this is two nineteen, this is Willow right here. The roundabout's right, if I was underneath this photo, the roundabout's right about here. We wanted to make sure that the applicant was continuing this line so that there will be a continual sidewalk landscaping, streetscape that continues across Willow all the way up to the improvements they're making further up. Additionally, right now, as you can see, this is the edge, this right here, I'm looking eastbound on two nineteen. This is the edge of the do-it-best site and the sidewalk end. This becomes county property right here. I'm, if I'm looking where the area was, this is county property in front of, on the other, on the front side of the church. So the condition reads that the applicant will continue this sidewalk and the landscaping all the way out to where they're around about. We thought it was important. We don't wanna have a gap in there. So the applicant's gonna continue that, make that connection. So there'll be continued bike and walkways all the way out to Butteville Road from the existing terminus on two nineteen. I've highlighted another road segment in here. This is Butteville Road south of New Butteville Road. I know that can be confusing. So think about the new Butteville Road is what we call this segment right here, the new realigned Butteville Road. Alright, the area I've highlighted here is, this is the area south of that. And this is the part that's subject to that I G A I talked about a little bit earlier where the county's insisting that the west side maintain a rural character, but the east side should have, meet all the city standards. It's very unusual. But again, staff's very supportive of it. We're happy to see it happen. One of the things that's interesting about this and the fact that they're putting the driveways out on Butteville Road is that the speed limit out there right now on Butteville is fifty-five miles an hour, which feels awfully fast to me. And it's certainly gonna have to be choked down for driveways coming in. It's gonna have to be choked down for a roundabout that's gonna be in the corner. And we wanted to make sure that the applicant was moving forward and making sure that that speed study happened. The city doesn't control those speed limits. ODOT does. There's a formal process as there is with everything at ODOT. Where we go through, we recommend, we have to go forward with a speed study. It has to be processed, analyzed and the speed is set. We're gonna have to work with the county because there's a lot of jurisdictions around here on this property. Ultimately, the ODOT does it. Ultimately, pardon me, ultimately, ODOT does the, uh, um, speed zone change. And this condition says that the applicant shall fund the data collection and engineering study for it. The city and or county would make the request. It's just easier that way. They prefer cities to do it. Existing conditions on Butteville Road in two nineteen. I call this out. This is yet another segment of roadway out here. And the reason I, I want everyone to be thinking of these kind of holistically about what they are and aren't gonna be doing around their property. So as we talked about, this is that north and west side of that parcel one, the undeveloped piece of land that wraps around the wetland area. These, the, the applicant's not proposing to make any changes out there. These are existing conditions. They're not gonna put in any street improvements out here. Other than, of course, there'll be some kind of closure that happens along here, but we're not talking about sidewalks, storm, landscaping, the rest of that. Those are technically required in the code because it's a partition. The fact is, this area is not proposed to be developed and there's a new Butteville Road connection that happens right here that's going to have all of those improvements in. And this way, the wetland and the repairing corridor isn't disturbed. There's also a requirement in our transportation system plan that calls for connecting Woodland Avenue over to existing Butteville Road, because of course, this doesn't exist in our T S P today. The applicant's proposing to not continue that and as I say, keep woodland as in its current configuration. The only thing they're proposing is to utilize it for construction traffic and so they can get the rest of these pieces open. Staff's supportive of that, but we were a little concerned about the construction traffic. So there's an additional condition put in here which reads the applicant should repair South Woodland Avenue to repair any asphaltic concrete surfacing. They're gonna repair the road, uh, as they damage. So they took some videos. We did an inspection prior to, prior to their, um, the grading and the construction work that they've started. And we'll come back and look at it at the end. And this condition lets us go back and make sure they make the repairs to it for anything they've done. After that, they're not gonna be using woodland at all. Uh, and the last kind of segment of roadway, because these are all a little bit different. They all have a very different look. Existing Butteville Road south of the area proposed to be developed. I have that highlighted here in red. Stepping back, this is similar to the other parcel. This is that parcel three that I talked about a moment ago. Uh, there will be some improvements here. I think it's a right turn lane that's gonna carve a little bit into this parcel, um, to, to get to this driveway. But they're not proposing the full improvements along here. Technically requires a variance. Staff's supportive of it. We'd like to see those improvements happen when development happens. That way we have a feel for where they need a driveway. Do they need different turn lanes? What kind of proportionality test, et cetera? That's a better time to collect it than now. So staff's supportive of those moving forward. And I talked a, a few minutes ago about that I M A and what it means. Uh, the fact that the applicant's gonna be subject to some additional transportation S T Cs on top of our typical transportation, traffic S T Cs. Uh, there's also additional W D O zoning criteria for this district. Part of it has to do with capping the number of trips that you can have out here. There's a trip Alex, there's, there's literally, uh, peak hour trips that are assigned to each of these subareas. In addition, there's a requirement that all development that takes place in here, submit and adhere to what we call T D M, Transportation Demand Management, program and requirements that are set up. And the goal of those is to reduce. And the goal of those is to reduce peak hour traffic. So they're supposed to come up with a plan and very tangible ways to reduce peak hour traffic. We've worked with them and I think we have a pretty good plan for how to achieve that. Next couple of slides are a little wordy. I apologize, but I think they're worth reading through. So the applicant is required under the code to submit a TDM plan. And the devil's really in the details. So what we've worked out is within six months of their issuance of certified occupancy, that way they can open up their doors, maybe get a feel for how many workers they have, how many are there initially, how they want to do some of this. They're to submit a list of enforceable programatics, TGM, TDM strategies with measures that will minimize peak hour vehicular trips. That's the goal. Minimize and get trips off or get vehicles off the road during peak hour. There's a lot of different ways you can do that. So they're going to give us a plan. That plan's going to include a lot of things. Uh, the first part is, one of the things that we, that, uh, I think we initially had discussions about was the fact that, as we all know, on the west side of town here on 219, anytime between September and December is by far the worst, right? The outlet gets packed and, uh, my suspicion is Amazon's probably going to be cranking up some of their operations and they're probably going to have a peak time of the year around that same, around that same time, causing an issue. So one of the things we talked about was this idea that they're to work with the city's economic development director, probably Jamie in this case, and the management coming at the company at the premium outlets to implement an annual holiday traffic management program. And that's what that's geared towards. We do something similar with the outlet mall right now. Um, it's much looser and we sometimes have people park over here. We do marketing to give people different ideas to, of how they can not drive to the mall and park over there. So we run a shuttle sometimes back and forth. And we're going to have, make sure that the applicant's involved in that process. To facilitate its success, the applicant's going to make a one-time financial commitment of $25,000 to the city to implement elements such as marketing, community outreach, possibly shuttle services, et cetera. Um, there's also in this TDM plan are going to be ongoing incentives for ride sharing, using transit, biking to work, et cetera. These are all the different things that you kind of do in-house to get people out of their cars and say, you can share rides. Here's how we're going to do it. Here's a bus pass. So if you, we'll pay for your bus as long as you get here. Um, as long as there's a bus shuttle service coming out here that gets you on time. Maybe something over at the parking ride to have people shuttle over. And there's a lot of ways they can work with the city. Might include onsite lockers. So people that work in Woodburn can walk or bike here, you know, seven, eight months out of the year, um, as long as there's a shower they should get into. So these kind of internal measures can be important. And they're going to have to submit a plan showing how they're reducing peak hour trips. A couple more things in here. A marketing plan, talking about information to workers on how, other ways they can get there. I was talking a little bit about that. They're trying to reduce single occupancy vehicles, particularly for peak hour. There's an annual report that's going to be submitted to the city. It's going to include performance measures and the effectiveness of the efforts they've been taking. A feasibility for the assessment for the, a tenant or a third-party transit operator to operate it, uh, an employee vehicular shuttle service between this, uh, building and a city parking ride location. There's kind of a natural tie here, right? We have a lot of people who are becoming to the transit center. Our parks and transit department's working really hard to create additional ties to Salem, to Wilsonville, so we can have people come there. And they're going to get dropped off to transit center. Having a quick one-stop shuttle that comes over here during peak hour would really be ideal for everybody. All those people wouldn't have to drive here now. You can keep them off the road. Oops, excuse me. That's my bad finger rolling last. Uh, the last one, and this is a big TDM condition and it's related to peak hour trips as well, is number 15. The applicant is going to pay to Woodburn Transit $300,000 for the purchase of planning and implementing transit services into this square area and for the project Basy side. The real thinking here is we have a lot of, uh, specific projects in our TSP, in our transportation system plan. We have a transit plan component that says, here's a half a dozen ways we can do it. We can buy a new bus. We can increase headways by doing these different things. We can run a new route out here. We can build new shelters to do that. Um, I'm trying to even think of some others. We have a long list of them. This would fund those and that money would have to go to provide transit service out here for this, um, uh, facility. So we've been worked, we worked a lot on some of these TDM and transit issues to try to address the peak hour trip issues. I'll talk about some more in a moment.
Chris, could you go back one slide and hit the, the last bullet point?
I'm sorry.
You missed that one.
Excuse me. Uh, there, there's also the, uh, as part of that TDM plan, there's going to have to be an onsite TDM manager appointed by the applicant to monitor, for monitoring enforcement. So there's going to be this annual review and there's going to be sort of a, this is going to be the, the, uh, project manager for this. This is the person that we, as a city, can reach out to and say, what are you doing for your holiday plan? We've had a problem with this. We're thinking of running a new transit out here. And if they decide to do shift change out there, we can hear something. Maybe they discover that they got a lot of workers coming out of, you know, who knows, some other part of Salem or someplace and they want to run some kind of different shuttle. Anything that keeps trips off the road and out of that interchange area is, is a real win for the city. Ideally, we're trying to make it easier for employees within the city to get there. And the transit, pedestrian and bike are really big ways to get there. I'm going to talk about some more transportation conditions. Um, as you can imagine, there's a lot of peak hour trips that come out of the site. I want to say it's around 1,200 is the number off the top of my head. They're here and I'm sure they'll, they'll give me the exact number when they, when they step up. And we've talked about a lot of the different things to do, but I want to touch on some more. These are specific, uh, so specific requirements that are called out, uh, within their traffic impact analysis or that have been required as mitigation from either the city or the county or the state. Um, and by the way, as I go through all these, we've already received assurances from the state that they're comfortable that the mitigations that are proposed with this proposal, this is from ODOT, uh, adequately mitigate the impacts of the traffic from this project. The county's on board as well. So we really have these three bodies, city, county and ODOT, working together for these traffic issues. Condition number nine, I'm just going to call some of these out quickly. Uh, calls for the applicant to increase southbound I-5 off-ramp capacity. That means making some improvements out there. The details are in condition nine. This comes right out of their traffic study. They need to add capacity. They need to make more space out there for people to get off I-5 from the southbound. Condition 19, this is the one I talked about, of doing off-site sidewalk connections right at the site. Uh, obviously, the biggest one, I don't want to, I don't want to go by it quickly, is reconfiguring and realigning Beuville Road and building a new roundabout. They can give you the number. I'm going to guess it's 9,000, $9 million improvement that's going to happen out there. Uh, that solves a lot of issues out on the western side of town. All right, solves safety issues. It increases capacity out there. There's a specific condition that they have to make sure that they do that. That's the new roundabout that comes in. Uh, condition 12 talks about Beuville Road and, and Par Road. So down to the south here, because there will be some traffic coming down on Beuville, the county has a, uh, included a condition of approval that we put into the, into the development order, uh, that says that they'll pay, they, the applicant will pay their proportionate share of improvements to that area. So there is a plan in the county's TSP. The county has their own transportation system plan. And there's a project in there that says, these are the improvements you want to see there. And like every other city and jurisdiction in the, in the state, they can ask for a proportionate share. In other words, uh, uh, contribute, a proportionate contribution to those improvements based on the amount of traffic they put in there. So basically, this is the way we always do it. For those who don't follow, we look, the cities look at how much traffic they're putting at a failing intersection, let's say. We look at, in this case, we usually have a project that says, we're going to fix it by spending a million dollars to do X, Y and Z, and they pay a proportionate share into that. We're not by law allowed to ask for more. We can't tell them, you're going to, you know, you're going to pay $50 million to make an improvement someplace if they're not actually impacting that or it's not proportional to what they're doing. So we do proportional analysis to make these determinations to how much money they should make into these improvements. Uh, condition number 10 specifies a lot of these, lists them out, uh, as financial contributions. They're for safety, signal, capacity, because there are different types of projects and different needs at the following intersections. They're at 214 and 5, 214 and Evergreen, Seto Meyer, and then all the way out at 99. And we got these and we came up with these. These are the exact same projects we've been calling for improvements in conditioning for the past couple of years. These are probably familiar to you guys, that planning commission's been looking at these. This is the proportionate share that came from this project. But we've been making, we've been making these smaller contributions. And the idea is to have applicants and development pay as it goes, pay their share as they go. And we get as much as we can legally get from applicants. In this case, there are some additional voluntary contributions. I talked about some of those. And in this case, they need that roundabout in order to make that site work. I told you, that's a real site constraint that they're going to be putting in. Uh, so the recommended conditions are generally meant to address any negative impacts from the various requests. I tried to walk through those and respond to the impacts on the transportation system. Overall, this is not a complicated site plan, right? It's basically a, a big square with parking all around it on an enormous site with some driveways. That's not really complicated. We have much more complicated projects to work on. But the transportation and street alignment around here is what makes it difficult and a bit more challenging. And there's a lot of different jurisdictions involved. Staff's recommendation is an approval with conditions. They're outlined in the report. Uh, we're recommending that planning commission consider the staff report, its attachments, and approve the application with the conditions recommended by staff. I have, what I have, uh, happy to answer any kind of quick questions you have at this point in the presentation. And I want to let you know, we have a few other people here on the city side and I'll, I'll introduce, uh, Janelle Shanahan with the county if she's still online. As things go on, if we need some questions, uh, we have, we have a big team here to answer questions as they come up. We also have Public Works and Engineering here from the city. And we also have, I have Chuck Green here. Chuck Green works for OTAC and he's the traffic engineer that my department hired to help us review some of these larger, more complicated projects. So he's working on behalf of the city, helped with the conditions, worked on that TIA, that traffic impact analysis and did a lot of the work for us on that end. It's highly specialized. What are we going to add? Oh, oh, that'd be great. Oh, I'm sorry. And Dan's pointing out to me a, a good point. So that's the end of staff's presentation. But I want people watching at home, and I know there's a few people in Jervis on, online watching as a group. There will be an opportunity to speak and testify. We have a public, uh, testimony, uh, portion of the meeting. It'll be coming up in a, in a moment after the applicant speaks. When we get there, uh, it'd be extremely helpful if, if you want to speak, you make sure you give your name and your address. And we need that because it formally gives you standing on the application. I think that wraps it up, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I think that's very complete. Uh, I have a couple of quick questions before, um, we ask the rest of the commission. One is, do we know how tall the Winko building is?
I've, I, I know it's less than 45 feet. I'm going to guess 40 and I'm within five feet of that.
Okay.
We feel good about that, Dan? 45.
Okay. The vacated portion of, uh, Beuville Road.
Yes.
There are, that services a couple of homes, I think, onto Beuville.
Yes.
What, what's going to happen to that vacated portion? Is it, will it, will it be blocked at 219 so they can only come? Uh, which, that would be fine, but, but what's going to happen there?
I'm trying to find the best graphic, this, well, yeah. I'll let Dan try to find it for me. And your answer is correct. So the proposal is to realign Beuville so that it comes east. And access into there would come in from, if I can zoom, if you can find one to zoom in on here. Here we go. Out the red line.
Actually, actually, the, the red line's kind of what I'm talking about.
Right.
And, and those homes.
Yeah, so they have access. I think, I, I want to say there's probably a dozen, I want to say maybe 13 total homes that take access up through here. Staffney's, uh, I think there's probably just pavement at the very beginning and then it goes the rest of the way. So they would come, you'd have access onto Beuville. Beuville will remain as it is. And you would get access here where this new, let me come down for a second, where the new intersection at Staffney and the new Beuville Road is. So it'll be a formalized intersection. It'll meet all of our requirements for site distances, stopping, it'll be signed. It'd have all the, all the treatments for the new development, but everything beyond here will remain as is.
But, but it would be blocked at 219?
That's correct.
Going north?
Okay, that's correct.
Other questions from the commissioner?
I had a couple. Go ahead. The first one's going to sound a little silly, but I've got to ask it. The roundabout is going, is that going to be large enough for trucks and farm equipment? I mean, that's going to be a huge roundabout.
It is. Um, so it's, what we've, we've put the, we call the WB67 template. That's the largest tractor trailer that goes out there. The applicant speaks towards it. That, that addresses every piece of farm equipment that we, we ever apply for turning movements.
And multiple, um, trailers? Or just, you know?
I, I will defer to the traffic console. I, I've never applied anything larger than a WB67 template. And the template, when I say that, what it does is it, if you're not familiar with it, it sort of shows how the inside and outside radius of a truck would turn around, um, circles or any kind of right or left turn. There are many traffic circles all over the world that accommodate.
It's widening up for all the combines and farm equipment that may or may not be going.
That's correct. We, we believe it has. I don't know of a larger template we could put on it that shows that it meets.
And is any part of Beuville Road, I'll call it Old Beuville, there's no widening of that road? Because we can't go that way?
So on, let me bring one up just to show the segments. So the applicant will be doing some widening of Beuville along their site, along their property, but why don't we talk about Old Beuville? No, there's no changes proposed out there beyond where it connects directly and where I showed that little small intersection.
And my final question is, can you give any kind of history on why we've limited the height of the building? Why we, we wouldn't allow the 105-foot tall buildings?
I truly don't. I don't have any history on that. Sorry.
That was my question.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay. The next step is testimony by the applicant. And again, when you come to testify, please give your name and, and address.
Good evening, Chair Piper, Vice Chair Esworth, fellow commissioners. I'm Stephen Meduli Williams. I'm an economic development manager at Amazon. I reside at 1721 Copper Penny Drive in Chula Vista, California. And I'd like to say on behalf of Amazon, we're truly excited to be here today. And I'd like to share a little bit about our experience so far in Woodburn. The city, the city has, the city administrator and his team have been truly fantastic. Uh, it's been a pleasure to work with them on Project Basy. They've been ultra-professional, diligent, and more importantly, very thoughtful. Uh, it's the, the kind of partnership that really gets us very excited. And, and to further, to talk a little bit about partnerships, And, and to further to talk a little bit about partnerships, over the past several months, we, we actually took the initiative to meet, to, to come into Woodburn and meet with a lot of local, with local stakeholders, organizations and residents. Really to, you know, not only to learn a little bit more about Woodburn, but also to hear some of the concerns that we had heard about, about the project, particularly around traffic and, and, and infrastructure. And to that end, we, we're excited that our development partner, Trammell Crowe, has been able to work with the city, really to kind of craft a plan that Chris has talked about today that really addresses a lot of those concerns because of, first and foremost, we're here to be a good partner. Obviously, we want to get packages to our customers, but we, we want to be a part of Woodburn. And more importantly, we want to fit in, in a way that works for both Woodburn and for Amazon. I'd like to close by saying that, you know, not only are we committed to, to bringing eighteen hundred new jobs to Woodburn, but we're also committed to making sure that as many of those jobs as possible are, are, are local Woodburn residents. Moving forward, again, we see this as just the beginning of a long-term mutually beneficial partnership. And we're just excited to be here and I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today and share a little bit about a project. I'd like to turn it over to Steve.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me? Steve Seber, Trammell Crowe Company, address four seven 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 Hastings Place in Lake Oswego, Oregon. Good evening, Chair Piper and Commissioners. Mentioned my name, Steve Seber with Trammell Crowe Company. I'm also here with Tom Nice Wonder, another Trammell Crowe employee. And we're the project developer and we're also the applicant for the land use application tonight. Both Tom and I are based here in Oregon. And I'd note that our company, Trammell Crowe, is continuously operated in Oregon since nineteen seventy-eight. That's something that we're very proud of. Tom and I have led seven developments for Amazon. This will be the fourth of this particular type of building. And we've worked with many cities over the years, both for this client and for others. And you heard it from Steven there, but I have to say it here too. And Chris, that, that staff presentation was fantastic. That was really well done. Your staff has been excellent. They've been very thorough in how they've approached the project, very professional. And it's really, it's been a pleasure to work with them. So the staff report and the findings that they've prepared are comprehensive and just really well done. And we support the findings of your staff. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening and your consideration of our land use application. And this time, I'm gonna turn the mic over to our technical team. That's led by Lee Leighton with, our planner with McKenzie. And Lee is online. There he is. He just popped up. And also, I believe, you want to introduce the rest of the technical team or I could certainly do it too. All right, I'll jump into it. I'll, I'll do it since I'm here, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Matt Hughard's here with Kittleson. He's our traffic engineer. You'll hear from him in a minute. Of course, you have Lee there. You have Terry Kraus, who's also with McKenzie, the architect. And we've got Carsten Mortensen and Chad with, with Kaufman, who's our civil engineer. And they can ask some of the questions about civil, some of the civil questions that might come up. So, did I miss anybody, Lee?
Alan Gay with Kaufman is also present virtually. And we have Kurt Lango from Lango Hansen Landscape Architecture. And I believe Patrick Kelly from Leighton Construction is on. He's the actual onsite construction project manager. Is he, is he there in person?
Yes, sir, he is.
Yeah. The point, Steve, as, as the planning commission has gathered, is we have essentially the whole team assembled here to be able to answer whatever questions they may have.
Yep, thank you. Take it away, Lee.
Okay, thank you very much.
Lee, can we get a name and address, please? Full name and address?
Absolutely. My name is Lee Leighton. I am a planner with McKenzie at one five one five Southeast Water Avenue, Suite one hundred in Portland, nine seven two one four. Well, I can, there's not a lot I can do at the moment except echo the sentiments of the previous two speakers when I say that you have an excellent planning director and staff at the city. They have worked very, very closely with us and also coordinated with the county and ODOT to keep this process moving forward as quickly as humanly possible to get this hearing to you. And they have been very, very diligent in watching out for things like aesthetics and the interests of the community. The, the staff prepared a very detailed list of conditions of approval. And it's no exaggeration to say they put their foot down on several things and were very demanding. And fortunately, we have a client that is willing to respond to those demands and wants to be a good member of the community. This is an exciting time for me because I've been practicing planning in Oregon since nineteen ninety. But I came to McKenzie in twenty fifteen and shortly thereafter started working on the annexation and the SWR master plan. So if my face looks familiar to some of you, it's because I've been before you, before in those public hearings for those processes. And it's very exciting to see the first actual real development going forward in the SWR area. And particularly to see such a large-scale success for the city. But as usual, Chris Kerr has thoroughly stolen all of my thunder by doing an excellent presentation. So I don't feel I have anything that he has left out that I need to walk you through. And I'm going to basically try to yield my time to Matt Hughard because I think traffic and transportation is a major interest of concern. Just two things before I do that. First, a note to staff. Chris, as you were presenting the identifications of parcels one, two, and three, it occurred to me that I think we may have a Scrivener's error in your conditions twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-two, where inadvertently, I think the references to the storm drain pipe on parcel two and one have been reversed. So if you and your engineering staff could look at that and just make sure that we're getting those parcel references correctly, that's in twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-two. That's not an issue. It's just, I think, a Scrivener's error. I want to make sure that those are correct. And sorry, I lost my train of thought. Let me suggest that I turn, oh, I know, sorry. What I'd like to do at this juncture is ask the planning commission, invite any questions you may have about the site planning, the methods that we're using to achieve the stormwater treatment and detention. Chris Kerr kind of outlined the basic principles of how we're going to keep downstream impacts from happening on Senecal Creek. But we have engineers here who can go to whatever level of detail you want to understand the actual practices and measures that go into doing that. They're the ones that have prepared the reports and done all the calculations. So we're here to answer whatever questions you may have. And I'd like to invite those at this time about things like the architecture and the site planning. And then we'll move on to transportation.
I, I will ask one question, and that is, you mentioned the treatment of the water containment before it goes into Senegal Creek. And in briefly and in layman's terms, how is that done?
So I have some notes that Alan Gay from our engineering team gave me. So let me work with those and we'll see if those address your concerns. And then if you want to go deeper, you'll pardon the pun, then he'll be here to, to help with that. So first, during construction, the runoff is controlled to prevent runoff exceeding the runoff that occurs from the site in its natural condition. So there's a level of soil absorption rate that is based on the types of soils that are there. And the engineers have to do calculations of how much water from, say, a, a typical storm that may happen once every ten years or so. They can calculate how rapidly the water runs off the site into Senegal Creek in this instance. And they have to design structures to treat the water to remove pollutants, but also detain it and keep it in ponds and other structures and slow down the release so that it mimics the pre-development conditions. And that makes Senegal Creek not get what's called flashy with flash flooding and so forth. It makes it behave similar to the way it did before development. So during construction, there's a system of ponds and berms. But as you saw on the site plan with the large blue area that, in the north part of the site, there's a permanent bioinfiltration swale that will be in place following construction, that will do that job for the building and all of the paved surfaces within the site on an ongoing basis. And it's the property owner's responsibility to maintain all of those facilities and ensure that they work correctly. A concrete washout is also part of the construction process to prevent uncured cement from getting into runoff. And then there's pH monitoring during construction and adjustments as needed to keep the runoff pH neutral. And finally, there will be a pipe that conveys the runoff to Senegal Creek with a riprap structure that's designed to spread out the energy of that water and not allow erosive impacts to, to occur at the outfall point in Senegal Creek. And that's how we protect Senegal Creek in this process.
I, I under, I understand what you're saying and, and I appreciate that those calculations probably deal with so many acre-feet of water based on the amount of, of the size, the overall size of the development and the fact that a good share of it is now covered up with asphalt. And as the water drains into the, to the impoundment area, coming off of the asphalt and having picked up heaven knows what kind of chemicals, mostly some type of petroleum, I would think, off the asphalt, how is that treated before it goes into Senegal Creek?
So this, this is where I would like to introduce Alan Gay to talk about that. It's also, while he's getting, while he's preparing, it's the subject of a detailed stormwater management report that has been provided by our engineering team to your staff, which your engineering staff have reviewed, and it explains how best management practices. This is a, this is a set of practices that's been in, in implementation for decades now in the Northwest. Kind of started in King County, Seattle area, but it has been popular in the Portland region and around Oregon shortly thereafter. And, and there are known practices for removing pollutants. And that's what we're using are those best management practices. And with that, let me introduce Alan Gay from Kaufman Engineers.
Thank you, Lee. So my name is Alan Gay. I work with Kaufman Engineers. Our address is ten North Post Street, Spokane, Washington, nine nine two zero one. And addressing the, the issue at hand here as far as how the stormwater with its pollutant load is treated before it hits the outfall and goes to Senegal Creek, we've designed that large north bioinfiltration swale to have an overflow that only allows flow out of the swale once it's detained, what's called the first flush. So that's equivalent to a rainfall event that we would expect about every year. So on the average, every six months to twelve months, that's a fairly large event. So only once that volume of stormwater has filled the basin, can it overflow and go on to the creek. And in the meantime, those pollutants have been sitting there in the swale and they'll be settling out. Also, the way that the outflow is designed, it skims, it doesn't allow oil sheen to leave the catch basin. There's a, basically a gooseneck structure inside there that has to overflow, underflow for flow to get in, out, and down across the outfall pipe. So we're preventing both the floatables and the settleable materials, pollutants, from leaving the site. They're kept inside the swale structure for most events.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. Any other questions from the commissioners at this point? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Leighton, if you have additional comments.
Thank you very much for bringing up those questions. I do not at this moment. So let me introduce Matt Hughard from Kittleson.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Hughard. I'm with Kittleson and Associates. And our address is eight five one Southwest Sixth Avenue, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two zero four. As Lee pointed out, I might also be a familiar face. I've worked in the city of Woodburn off and on over the last ten years, most, most recently working with the city on the update to their transportation system plan. So many of you are familiar to me and I'm glad to be back here this evening. I have been leading a small army of staff on our end to prepare the traffic impact analysis for this project. We knew going into this project that traffic was going to be a big topic and a big focus of, of this pretty major and sizable project. I've got a presentation here tonight, but as everyone keeps pointing out, your staff has already stolen all out of our thunder. So I'm gonna use this as more of a graphical talking point on a couple of topics. So if you see me checking my phone here tonight, it's not because I'm monitoring the football game and trying to maintain status on score updates. My colleagues have been monitoring the chat box on the online platform and feeding me the questions and comments that have been coming in on traffic. So I keep looking to that, make sure I'm not missing anything. So I'm gonna try my best to skim past a lot of the detail you've already heard this evening and just talk about some of the questions and comments that we've been hearing on the chat and that we would anticipate you all asking here tonight. So I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. Yeah, a project of this size and this significance is gonna generate a lot of traffic. We knew that walking into this. So we focused our study to try and identify the peak times in which this particular site is going to impact the transportation system. And one of the unique elements associated with it is, is this site is gonna operate in shift patterns. But those shift patterns are going to be quite spread out. So if you look at a facility of this size, it's not, it's not gonna be a whistleblow and all the employees are gonna stream out onto this, onto the roads and you're gonna have a major traffic jam. Amazon has done this and they've been doing this for years. They know how to operate these sites and they know how to slow release their employees onto the system so that we don't have large plugs of traffic gumming up the transportation network. Be that as it may, there's still gonna be additional vehicles on the system. And a lot of the roadway improvement projects that Chris went through this evening are a reflection of the need to have to try and accommodate that demand. The roundabout and the realignment of Beuville Road being the most significant. There are a handful of other improvements that we're making, notably the widening and the lengthening of the southbound off-ramp on I-5 to try and get more lineage on that off-ramp so that you have the ability to accommodate a lot of that left turn demand that wants to go into Woodburn, as well as the increased right turn demand that we expect to be generated by this site. A number of other improvements are gonna be paid for through proportional share contributions, all in the attempts to mitigate, to some extent, the traffic that, that is going to be impacting the system. Chris, if you don't mind advancing the slide, a few slides ahead, get to the picture of the roundabout. Yeah, so we've talked about this roundabout. This is not a haphazardly placed roundabout. It has gone through a lot of study and evaluation to determine the optimal location. As Chris Kerr noted earlier, ideally, we'd like to place that roundabout at the location of the existing Beuville two nineteen intersection. However, the right-of-way constraints on the southeast quadrant, the private property constraints on the northeast quadrant, and the urban growth boundary forming the west, yeah, the western boundary of that intersection just doesn't allow an intersection, whether it be a signalized intersection or a roundabout, to be constructed there without significant impacts to one or more of those quadrants. So our only choice in order to accommodate this was to propose what's shown here. It's just this realignment of Beuville, takes it around the wetland and aligns it at a location along the two nineteen inner highway at a, at a distance to where we can still keep ourselves out of that Senegal Creek wetland area, not impact the bridge and the culvert that runs over the, the water feature, but still go far enough to the east to the point where we're not adversely impacting the properties to the east, such as Do-It-Best of the church and the single-family homes along Willow Avenue. So that's kind of the sweet spot location and that's what drove the realignment of Beuville as shown in this imagery here. A, a couple of questions have arose. If you can advance to the next slide. This is the same imagery. We're just advancing a little bit further to the south. We talked about closing off the Beuville intersection at two nineteen. That's part of our proposal. And in order to reconnect Beuville and to serve the properties, namely, that's, that are utilizing the Staffney Lane, it'll be reconnected as shown in the bottom half of that image. It just so happens to reconnect opposite one of the proposed driveways serving the site. If you can back up two slides, Chris. So this site plan here, just to kind of continue the theme of improvements along Beuville, speaking on behalf of, of uh, speaking on behalf of, of, of my colleagues on Kaufman Engineering, um, they, uh, are leading this effort, but I'll speak, uh, to it just for the continuity here. Once we take, uh, the realigned Butteville and then we match it back up with the existing segment that's on the north part of the imagery here, um, that is going to be significantly widened, um, per some of Chris's earlier, um, outlines. That widening is going to be fairly significant. There's a couple of cross sections on the bottom half of this graphic here. If you're not familiar with reading those, it basically is a slice, uh, through the pavement and you can see how much additional width is being added, uh, to Butteville. And in this instance, we're essentially adding and taking an unimproved two lane county facility and improving it into a, almost a full, a three lane cross section. So there'll be one single travel lane going northbound, one single traveling going southbound, and then there'll essentially be a center turn lane, uh, in the middle to facilitate left turns, uh, at each of the proposed site driveways. And then it wasn't mentioned here tonight, but a future realignment of Lebron Road that's being administered by others. So, um, that is, uh, part of the improvements. And as you can see, uh, as Chris noted earlier, uh, most of the widening is occurring to the east of the roadway center line. Uh, so there'll be sidewalks and bike lanes, uh, in addition to those widths, but most of that widening is occurring on the property or on the land owned, uh, by this applicant. So, uh, that's where most of the right of way improvement is going to be. All that improvement is really designed to accommodate the traffic load and the demand associated with a project like this. It was noted earlier, um, when we look at these peak time periods, uh, they are significant in terms of the amount of trips be generated. Now, they would be slow released and spread out over the course of somewhere, anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half, uh, in order to get all that, that employment, both in and out during the shift change time periods. But it'll mostly focus on the time periods of 6:30 to 7:30 in the morning. So slightly before most of the rest of the traveling public is out on the facility in the morning and that's by design. Um, it's also going to occur slightly after, uh, the, the, uh, the peak evening time period. So if you were to go out there today, the typical evening time period is roughly between 4:30 and 5:30. That's when traffic is typically the heaviest in and around the interchange. Uh, this particular site and the, uh, shift, the shift pattern, uh, as proposed is going to change that, uh, shift change roughly between 5:30 and 6:30. So slightly after, uh, the time period. And that's also by design in order to try and minimize the loading and the impacts to, uh, the existing peak time periods. Now, it doesn't eliminate that, uh, traffic, um, and there's a little bit of overlap on both sides. Uh, but it was an attempt to ensure that we've got, uh, the least amount of impact as possible, um, on the system when it's currently, uh, running at its highest levels. So I think that was important as an attempt to try and minimize, uh, how much traffic in recognition that we're still going to generate quite a bit of trips. Uh, there's also going to be quite a bit of freight traffic, um, to a facility like this, as you can imagine. Uh, one of the things that's unique about this particular client and applicant is, um, the freight traffic is not going to peak at the same time the employment traffic is essentially, you can't be doing a shift change and still running the same amount of freight in and out of that facility. The freight has to pause while the shift changes are going on. So most of the freight traffic is going to occur outside of the main, uh, shift change time period. So, you know, anywhere from roughly 8:30 to, or you're going to find most of your freight traffic. And then prior to and beyond those time periods, um, coming into those peak time periods. So, um, the freight and the employment don't match up and don't line up at, at the peak times. They're designed to offset each other. As far as the distribution of trips, uh, there's a number of comments on the chat box about where the trips we expect, where do we expect them to come and go from? Well, as you can imagine, a facility like this, Woodburn is probably going to have its share of employment opportunities at a facility, but it's also large enough that we anticipate a lot of the employment traffic to come from places beyond Woodburn. So, um, looking at travel patterns and, um, uh, the facilities that are most likely to accommodate the demand, uh, we'd certainly expect the I-5 corridor to hold the brunt of the regional draw. But there's also going, an expectation that Highway 219, uh, going off to St. Paul and Newburgh and beyond will draw quite a bit of trips. Um, a much smaller percentage, we expect coming up north, uh, along the Butteville corridor, uh, through Jervis. Don't mean to diminish that impact, but we do anticipate that, that, that demand along the Butteville corridor to be fairly small, uh, in comparison to the other travel pass. Um, and then a lot of demand pulling from the east through and, and including Woodburn. So, uh, facilities like Par Road, uh, the Highway 214 corridor, um, and North Butteville Road, uh, to the north will prob- most likely, uh, generate draw and draw demand into and from this site. However, uh, we have studied all of those, um, facilities, uh, city staff, county and ODOT asked and, and required, uh, quite a number of intersections to be analyzed within the TIA, um, to, uh, measure and identify whether the facilities themselves can still accommodate that additional demand. And any intersection that I noted that isn't a focus of the mitigation measures noted here tonight, we found that, uh, both in the build out year of this facility, which would be roughly 2023, um, and a long-term analysis looking at a 2040, um, horizon year, uh, most or all of those intersections can still function adequately according to the adopted mobility, um, standards or targets. Um, so if we haven't identified mitigation at one of these intersections, it's simply because, uh, the analysis found that, uh, there are no additional mitigation is needed above and beyond what's currently out there today or what might currently be planned and expected to be funded by one of these other, uh, agencies over time. Uh, let's see, uh, last question, uh, that came up about trucks earlier. Uh, so the freight through and around that roundabout, yes, uh, the WB67 is a single, the largest single track trailer, uh, design vehicle. Uh, it's the most common and the, uh, the design vehicle most likely associated with Project Basie. Um, but as a dual double lane roundabout, that WB67 with two lanes and a fairly large and, and specially designed truck apron, truck apron can accommodate, um, most any, uh, farming, uh, related vehicle uh, that you would expect to see in this part of the state. So, uh, to whoever's question that was earlier, uh, we have looked at the trucks and the freight and they can all circumnavigate that roundabout, uh, according to the current design layout that we've come forth with. Think I probably have missed one or two points here. Maybe it'll come to me, but I'll, maybe I'll pause there and, and, uh, see if there's any additional questions.
Um, yes. I think that the interchange was vastly underestimated. The size of the interchange was underestimated for the amount of traffic. There's still one lane from the outlets going to Woodland on the other side. And I don't see, you want to extend the south exit, but I don't see how that's going to mitigate anything.
So, um, I don't know if we've got a good image. Yeah, there is one. Chris, if you can, uh, advance to the southbound off-ramp slide. It's, there we go. Um, so this is not a very, uh, pretty slide, especially just a aerial photo I stole off of, of, uh, Google Maps. Um, and what I've done is I've highlighted in yellow, um, and it's, there's no, uh, design associated with that. It's just meant to kind of illustrate, uh, the area of concern on our end. But one of the things that we had noticed is, uh, when you are coming southbound on I-5, um, you come around the corner and you start to approach the, the, uh, signal there, uh, that single lane off-ramp widens and it really points you in the direction of the dual southbound left turn lane. So if you wanted to go left to go into the main part of Woodburn, um, and then at that point, there is a slight right turn that gets developed beyond those left turn lanes. Um, and one of the things that happens at certain times, particularly today with the outlet stores, is that left turn demand at certain times of the day can pinch off access to that right turn lane. And as a result, traffic can get, um, can create a queue that builds back on that off-ramp and at worst, worst case scenarios can build back onto the freeway lane. And it does, correct. Yep. So, um, one of the things we recognize with the additional trips that would be generated by this facility, because most of it's going to be turning right, not left, is we need better access into that right turn lane. So what's illustrated in yellow there is the portion of the off-ramp that we would be widening. And this is all contingent upon additional ODOT review and, and approval. Uh, but our proposal right now is to widen that off-ramp and to extend that right turn lane essentially along the, the extent of that yellow line. And there'll be some widening and some other, um, uh, uh, improvements that come into that from the off-ramp itself, uh, but fairly significant, uh, improvement on that off-ramp. To strictly, it, it, it make the access to that right turn lane much easier so that it doesn't get pinched off by that left turn demand that, that happens more frequently, um, on, than, than the right turn lane. Well, I answered your question, but that's what our, one of our proposals for, for mitigating the traffic demand.
So I wanted to ask about the trucks again. I still don't understand, is it two, those, when they have two trucks together, two trailers together? Is that ever, uh, going to be used here?
Yeah. So, uh, I, we, we're told no, uh, and that's based on how Amazon operates, um, other facilities of this size and of this nature. What they're essentially mostly generating are the longest semi-trailer tractor. So it's, you have the tractor itself and then you have the long, um, trailer associated with it. But it's not an articulated trailer, meaning it's not divided in two segments. This would be a single, single trailer, uh, but it's just the longest version of, of the single trailer type that's on the freeway system today. Um, that's predominantly what they run. Uh, there may be some smaller trucks, um, on occasion, but that would be the largest truck that this particular, uh, operator would run. But as I noted earlier, there's certainly recognition, there's a lot of farming going on in this area. And so that doubling roundabout design and a lot of the special features that go into these roundabouts, such as multiple truck aprons in the center, can accommodate those extra large on occasion vehicles that have to get through these facilities. So there would be no concern getting, getting most, uh, farming equipment through here. Did I answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
I did have one small question. Uh, we've talked about the employee cars and the volume of employee cars. We've talked about trailer, trucks and trailers. Are, is this also a van distribution center? Are you filling up vans and then delivering or?
I'm going to take a shot at that. I'm going to look at Steve. Uh, okay.
Mr. Chair, what you're referring to is a delivery station, last mile delivery station. And so, um, no, this site is a fulfillment center, which is really kind of our first mile, largest facility. And this is where our fulfillment starts and not, uh, and this is not by any means a delivery station. So no, no vans coming out of this site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, is where?
Um, I'm sorry, I was just, uh, monitoring the chat here and I saw a couple of additional questions come in. I thought I'll just take a shot at addressing them. Um, so, uh, one individual is asking, uh, so there'll be traffic all day long. And so I, I would characterize this as there will be trips generated by this facility, uh, on a 24-hour basis. That is, uh, not anything that, that this particular applicant is trying to hide. Uh, the majority of the trips that will be noticeable on the system are going to be during these two shift change time periods. So that 6:30 to 7:30 plus probably a half hour on either side. And that 5:30 to 6:30, that's when it's going to be most noticeable because that's when the most of the employment traffic is going to shift in. So the night shift will be leaving, the day shift will be coming in. Um, the freight traffic is going, and so during all other times of the day, the employment based traffic is going to be fairly minimal, comparatively speaking. Uh, the freight traffic, however, will be more significant during those other 22-ish hours of the day. Now, I think the freight traffic at night won't be as high as it probably would be in the morning, but, uh, this particular, um, operator does have freight traffic running fairly consistently. I think that was the last question there.
Okay. Is there anything?
I am here. Thank you. Um, I do have a question perhaps for our chair. Matt has referred to some of the, uh, questions and comments that people have posted in the chat window. And, um, it would be a bit tedious, I think, for us to try to talk about each and every one of those. What is the chair's preference for how in this forum we, uh, we take up any issues? Is it something that you want to see if the planning commissioners are interested in any of these questions?
Well, the commission is interested in comments that are germane to the issues. If they are, that, that we are deliberating over. If there are general Q and A type questions that aren't relevant, then we would prefer they be handled in a different forum. Chris, you have a comment?
Uh, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, just, uh, and I know it's because we're working online and we're using a go-to meeting. It's really important that anybody who wants to testify, and that's raise a question, raise a comment, anything on the record that they want the, that they want the planning commission to consider, that they actually submit that information to, and essentially at this point in time, stand up during the public hearing component, state their name and address, and they can provide whatever kind of testimony they like. And then that response can be addressed by the applicant during their rebuttal. I think that's important.
Yes, and, and I would agree. If, if you have germane comments to be made, that you feel will impact our deliberation on these issues, then as, um, Chris said, ring in, give your name and address and, and state your interest. Are, are you, are the Basie people done with their presentation?
Yes. Uh, oh, Steve, did, were you, did you have something else you wanted to say? Steve Seaver?
Okay.
Mr. Chair. I'd reinforce what the planning director just said. Actually, the rules in land use cases say that if it's not placed before the body, that'd be the planning commission in this case, that it's not in the record. So I mean, if we have chat going on, uh, that you're not hearing because it's not before you as a body, then it's not in the record.
Right, right. That's, that's why I say if you, if you feel that you need to get, uh, on the record with germane comments to what we're deliberating about, then you need to step up, give your name and address and state your concern. Okay, applicant is done, correct? Okay, thank you. The next, um, step is testimony by proponents or those people who are in favor of the project. There is a, I have here two testimony sheets. One is from Dawn and Kathy Shade, who lists their, uh, testimony as neutral, little Bruteville Road. Are you, Dawn? Do you wish to testify at this time? We have your letter. Yes, if you want to testify, come forward. And, and again, Dawn, for, for the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Dawn Shade and I live in, at 16056 Butteville Road. We kind of have a front room view of what's going on. My number one concern is, I, I, I've heard it all evening and there, they've talked about the water concern. But we've had like major fires that we've never seen before. What if we have a major rain? Aren't they really prepared for that? The first year we had our barn built. The first year we had our barn built. Seneca Creek just out of rain come up and flooded the barn. We had trenches built, what have you. So we've taken care of that problem for our barn. But with this development coming in and a major rain. My trenches aren't going to do a thing. I've actually started looking into flood insurance again, which. God knows I've got insurance coming out the years, but here's another one coming. It never entered my mind until coming here tonight. I also have a concern for crime rate. I mean, we're talking thousands of people. Whether this is a really worthwhile thing to think about or not. But it entered my mind here tonight. Traffic, you know, what can I say? We have to plan. When we're going to leave our place to get out of driveway now. This is going to entail a new plan. If this comes in effect. I have a lot of concerns. I. I realize this is a major thing, major employer. And we need it, I guess. But. I'm just real concerned about number one, the water situation. And. That's pretty much it. We live the first house. Actually, the second house north of this development. So we get firsthand whatever comes at us, and it's a concern.
Thank you, Mr. Shade. The other testimony sheet I have is is listed as testimony against, and that will come a little bit later. So I will now ask any of the online people. If they have testimony in favor or neutral.
Hello?
Yes?
Yeah, yeah, my name is Martinez. I live in 8259 Highway 219 Northeast in Woodburn. A few of my concerns were, as the gentleman was just talking about Seneca Creek. A lot of the water is going to be more directed into Seneca Creek. Because all the asphalt has been be more of a funnel system. So right now in the wintertime, our backyard is basically flooded. You know, the little three foot creek becomes a twelve foot creek. So in the wintertime, if that's how it is now, I can imagine that twelve footer soon a triple. Who knows how much more? So that property is useless for us. It's going to be useless for us in the wintertime. So has that been thought or been discussed with anybody around there? That's one of the topics. And another one is the traffic. That's highly going to impact the five homes here. The five homes right now, as as it is right now, just trying to get all that driveway gets kind of hard at times. And I can imagine trying to come in. Especially when having a one way route. So that's one of the things that I'm not for. Then the noise, the noise is another impact. We can hear the the machinery right now as they're excavating right now. I can imagine all the semi trucks driving around. More traffic is going to. Is going to cause a big, you know, issue with us as well. So anyways, going back to Seneca Creek, the water is going to be the problem right there. But how about down the line where it goes? Where does it go to? Is that going to be backed up there somewhere? Is that going to affect us even more if it backs up? Who's going to be monitoring that line? So I think that's, you know, one of the things that my concerns. And. Just trying to go through my notes here. You know, like they were saying, there's a lot of livestock down that line that go on that creek in the wintertime. You know, sometimes when the water, when the creek gets pretty wide. If you have any livestock on the side of the creek, you can't get to it. It's it's there until the water goes down again. Then now with the asphalt, like the gentleman was saying about petroleum base going into the water system, is that going to affect the livestock? You know, and backing up more, we have kids running around with the water being so much wider now, it's basically be a river now. So right now, that's that's my concerns. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anyone else? Okay, hearing done, we will now ask for testimony from opponents or those that are in opposition. To the applicant. Roberto Schroder. Again, name and address, Mr. Schroder.
My name is Roberto Schroder. I live in 8249 Highway 219 Northeast. That was kind of I kind of missed the road on that. Probably should have put neutral or something. On there because that's my neighbor that was just speaking. And it's just my concern. I was hearing him speak. Saying something about you're going to put a. A safety U-turn. Round, no. U-turn, I get to my property. I got truck, trailer and stuff. Sometimes I come the back way just because the mall gets packed on the weekends. It's easier for me to come to back way to my house, get off a dawn. So what's the safety U-turn? There's going to be more traffic. Especially having a truck and a trailer. Sometimes I bring hay, I got livestock. That was just, I was listening to him say that. It's like.
Okay.
There's not much of a. I don't see a safety U-turn. There and. And this in the hand say about those trucks turning around those roundabouts, how it's going to be big enough. I've driven around those with truck and trailers. You know, they're going to be hugging both of those lanes, turning. Some sometimes even get up on the the center part just to turn. And I've seen him. I've seen it happen before. So what if there's like a car inside and this truck's coming around? It could. Potentially, you know. Definitely happen to the car. Just some concerns that.
Okay.
But mainly it was just the that entrance thing now, now that I have to go out, I have to go to the roundabout, turn around. And head to town. You know, like it's been a safety issue. I've got kids. My my opinion part might not be worth a lot, but it's just it's an opinion out there, you know. I have to leave an emergency, take my kids to the doctor, hospital or something. I have to take a right, go around about. And then head to the emergency room. Stuff like that, I think though.
Okay. Thank you, sir. On our online folks, is there any one who wants to testify in opposition? Or against the application?
Hello?
Yes?
Hi, this is Pam Foreman, a city and council member for the city of Jervis.
Yes. Name and address, please.
This Pamela Foreman. I'm at 730 Alder Avenue in Jervis, Oregon, 97026. My question is to understand better the. Widening of the east side of Butteville Highway. Where does it begin and where will it end? As far as will it be widened all the way into entering the city of Jervis? Or how far will that go down? Is it a moon pack, our bus rides? Our children, our traffic in a small community?
Okay. Okay. Any other testimony?
Yes, my name's Darlene Sprecker. My address is 8288 Crosby Road Northeast, Woodburn, Oregon. And I just have real concerns about the traffic in and out of Woodburn. I, you know, I travel on Crosby Road every day. I now see people passing in no passing zones. I see much more truck traffic. So I'm really concerned when I hear that we are going to have, you know, 4,000 more vehicles on these roads. Because as anybody that knows that lives around here. If there's an accident on I-599E and and Butteville Road are the go to places. So I just want to express my concerns about this. This potential for disaster on these back roads. I mean, we have, we have farmers, we have farm equipment. People that aren't from here could care less about this. I see them passing all the time. It's just very dangerous. There's accidents, you know, every, I don't know, two months at Butteville Crosby Road. So I just want people to think about that when they're talking about. You know, we're going to address all the traffic issues right around. The Amazon complex, but nothing else. None of the surrounding roadways are being addressed, which really concerns me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Martinez here again. 8259 Highway 219, Woodburn. Another thing they brought up about that traffic. They're on a Butteville Road. As you come to Woodburn, you emerge into 219. There's a little bridge right there that crosses Seneca Creek. A lot of it's low traffic is going to be. You know, it's going to multiply. They were talking about 4,000 cars a day. They're trying to flow that through that ram. Sometimes there's blind spot. If you don't respond and commit yourself to taking off. Somebody's going to run into you or you or you can hit somebody else. That's one thing. Then another thing, this is this for the Water Works Department. Yeah, are you guys going to be expanding your water and sewers towards this direction? Because I know it ends at Willow. So I want to see if is that going to be an expansion and something that we're going to be able to benefit from it as well? Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing done. Rebuttal by the applicant.
Lee, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've got. Some storm that the concerns that we heard were related to stormwater. I think we can add a little more specificity to. Our response that maybe answers those traffic concerns. Or general, I didn't hear a lot of very specific questions in in the traffic concerns, but if if. If you all have a specific question, we're we'll be ready to answer it, but I don't know that I got. And and Lee, I think you were taking notes too, but as it relates to traffic. I I heard a question from City of Jervis about the east side of Butteville. So we'll answer that. I'm just going to quickly run through what I try to summarize, I think, what I heard. There was, and then the utility question that came there at the end, we can answer that. Lee, is there anything else that you heard in the concerned citizens?
Yeah, I am. Thank you. I, in addition to some traffic concerns that I think Matt Hugart can. Respond to, there are also some concerns about runoff patterns in Senecal Creek. Especially in high flow events, and I would like for Alan Gay to talk about the engineering approach to understanding those. And and dealing with them in this project.
Yep. So why don't we tackle that one first? And and I think before Alan comments, I'd just add here, this is a. Very common civil engineering challenge for any development, whether it's industrial, retail, apartments, anything like that. It's the engineering is is well worn. Alan's going to tell us about it here. But it's something that every site is challenged with and can answer with an engineered solution, and that's what we've done here. So Alan, you want to add some some detail to the concerns about Senegal Creek being impacted by our development?
Yes, I I'm happy to do that. So. I believe I understand your concerns, Mr. Shade and Mr. Martinez. Regarding the the flows in Senegal Creek and what will be. What appears like we would be adding. So in designing this site, not only did we take a look at small storm events, relatively small. That we need to intercept the pollutants from. But we also took a look at storm events of varying sizes all the way up to and including a 100 year return event. So that's a storm event that we would expect to occur based on the historic record. To happen only once in 100 years. So that's a 1% chance of it happening in any given year. And in doing that and considering that size of storm, we've designed our facilities. So that that very large pond there can fill up to three feet deep. And detain that much stormwater, preventing it, holding it back. So that the amount that's released actually to Senegal Creek is no greater. Than the amount that's released now during a major event. So while Senegal Creek does flood during a storm of that size. There's a recognized regulatory flood plain that accommodates that overflow. Developments prevented from being built. It within that flood plain, and there's a reason for that to prevent damage. And so the amount of stormwater coming from our site during an event that large. Is not going to make the problem any worse. It's not going to make the flow, the water level in Senegal Creek any greater. Than it would be already during an event of that magnitude. I I hope that that addresses your concern.
Yep, that was that was excellent, Alan. Thank you. Lee, I think we we moved from storm. I think we've covered storm with with Alan's response there. Would you agree?
There was one. There was one additional question, Mr. Martinez, and I think another speaker had. About whether utilities would become available to the five lot development that is north of Highway 219. My recollection is, first of all, all water and sewer and storm utilities will be installed in these roadways. In accordance with the SWR master plan that was approved in 2017. And so the utilities are all being put in place. As I recall, there's a water main included through the roundabout. But I don't know, and you'd have to, I think the city engineer. Or engineering staff may be able to talk about what it would take for people to access that line. To get water service. Many jurisdictions in Oregon require people to annex into the city in order to get service. But I do believe it's possible that this, these improvements would include a step in the right direction for those folks, and they should understand that.
Great. And I think the last question maybe came from the city of Jervis about the east side Butteville expansion. Maybe there might be some confusion on on how far we're expanding the right away. And the roadway structure for Butteville, and that's really just along. Our project area. I think I think that was the question that came up, but Lee, did you pick that up too?
I did, and I don't think we need Matt Hugart to point out that. The widening of Butteville Road will occur only along the property frontage. And this applicant also owns the triangular property identified as parcel three to the south. Those frontage improvements would happen when that property develops in the future. But all of those will end at the viaduct where Butteville Road goes over Interstate five. So at the moment, this project, well, this project is simply not proposing to make any. Widening or other improvements at any point south of that. Viaduct that goes over I-5 in Butteville Road.
Yep, perfect. So Lee, if you agree, I think we'll conclude our response to to. Yep, perfect. So Lee, if you agree, I think we'll conclude our response to the citizen testimony.
The one caveat I would offer is if the planning commissioners have an issue that they have identified, that they heard in testimony that we have failed to respond to, I would invite them to bring that to our attention so we can do something.
Well, I'm just concerned about Mr. Schroder and Mr. Martinez. I wonder, is it possible for design people to contact the people that actually live right in that area and get their truck into their property?
Well, I will, let me offer that I think the way the street network operates for like an individual towing a trailer, where we're not talking about big rigs and so forth, there are opportunities for them to circulate on local streets. This is an infrequent event, and I think the local streets will have capacity to accommodate those movements and that we can talk with them about strategies for making that work in the new context. I don't think it's an issue that rises to the level of holding up these proceedings, though.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, then, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, it is our time to discuss and deliberate and reach a decision. Anybody want to jump in first?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Chris.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. One in particular would be.
Hold on just a second, Chris, please.
Yeah.
For those of you who are listening to this, this is Commissioner Lassen, and he is attending our meeting as a Zoom meeting. And that's why we are listening to what he has to say as a member of the commission. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. First of all, Chris Kerr did an excellent job. I'm not going to go over that because we're running a couple hours long into this. However, that really, in my opinion, really laid it out. Plus all the information that we got and looking at it, and I did spend considerable time going through it, as I'm sure the other commissioners did too. As far as the folks that had comments, I can understand their concern with traffic and whatnot. I think that's pretty well addressed now. I did read the traffic impact studies quite thoroughly. I believe that's going to, I believe that's all going to work out where I can see it, at least at this point in time. So that's basically my comments. I'm ready for a vote whenever you want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
For me, I think we've got a conscientious applicant and staff was thorough and careful deliberation. I'm ready to vote too.
Okay.
The one thing that I wanted to point out, not only was it, thank you so much, Chris, but the iteration number eleven, which is in order to mitigate the impacts of the new roundabout, the applicant will work with ODOT to determine the existing eastbound left turns into the private drives, serving the single-family homes on Willow can be accommodated. So I do commend our staff for trying their best to look out for the actual homeowner in that area. And I know this says that they're going to work with ODOT. I would hope that our city staff also reaches out to those five homeowners and tell them about what the plans are so that they do have a good sense of how they're going to get in and out of their driveways and how that's, how we are working to mitigate the impact on their properties. Because it is important, like I said, I want to commend our staff for actually putting that in the plan as one of the conditions of approval. Reach out a little bit more and talk with those individual homeowners as plans move forward.
I agree.
I think this project is extremely well thought out. I think every contingency that can be imagined has been incorporated, especially where traffic is concerned and dealt with. There will be problems. Nothing ever comes off without a hitch. But one of my first employers that I ever worked for defined good problems and bad problems. Bad problems like when you didn't have any business to deal with and you were trying to figure out how to do it. Good problems will be these problems that come with Amazon. They will arise. I think there'll be a wonderful partnership between our city and Amazon, and they will be worked out and dealt with. Some of these are going to be up to the county, but I think Amazon brings enough positive elements to our city that it more than covers or outweighs any of the problems that are going to come up with. And there will be some problems. I have to say I love the thoughtful creation, the solution for the, with the roundabout. What we all call McCormick's Corner has been a problem for fifty years at least that I know of, and this will solve it. It's going to make some traffic patterns a little bit different for people that live in the immediate area, but I think all in, it's going to be a wonderful solution and a safe solution. I am very happy too that basically the city staff and the development department and Amazon are in agreement with all the conditions and the whole plan that's been put together. Sometimes these things can be tenuous, and I think it's marvelous and speaks very well to the partnership that will arise between Amazon and our city. I think Amazon will be a tremendous new partner, and I hope to welcome them soon. Are there any other comments from the commission? With that thought in mind, the chair would entertain a motion. Oh, wait. Scrivener problems with the conditions.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair, if the commission's inclined to make a motion for approval, I would recommend, I agree with the comment that came up from the applicant. There is a Scrivener's error in here, and I think it'd be clarified. If there was a motion to approve, they include to specifically also modify conditions twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-two to reference parcel one instead of parcel two. Don't give up? I think that would clarify, and we could make that change.
Okay.
Twenty-nine, thirty?
One and thirty-two. You reference parcel one instead of parcel two. They incorrectly referenced two, and it should be one.
Okay, so I move that Project Basie Design Review twenty-one dash zero seven, Street Exception twenty-one oh three, Preliminary Partition twenty-one oh one, Property Line Adjustment twenty-one oh one, Riparian Quarter and Wetline Overlay District Permit twenty-one zero three, and Variances twenty-one dash two be approved subject to the conditions of approval described in the staff report dated September nine, twenty-twenty-one, including to modify conditions twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-two to reference parcel one instead of parcel two. And an order for the signature of the chair be prepared.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, I'd like to do a roll call vote on this, please.
Commissioner Lassen?
Yes.
Commissioner Berlin? Commissioner Corning?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartel? Vice Chair Ellsworth?
Aye.
And Chair Piper?
Yes. Amazon, welcome to Woodburn. Is there any further business to come before the commission? Are there any updates from staff?
Just very briefly, I wanted to let everyone know that we will be having a meeting in two weeks. You know, you had a little bit of a break over the summer, missed a few. We have quasi-judicial items lining up again as we had in the spring, and we're going to be working on some code amendments. So at your next meeting, we're expecting a sign, a variance from a, from a sign code to permit a sign to be constructed. And then we're going to have a work session to talk about new legislative changes, changes to our zoning code, relating specifically to trees and the transportation. It'll be a work session for discussion. It's not a public hearing. We're going to talk about it, walk commission through it, see how we feel about some of the change. Right?
Okay.
That was all I had.
And that's the twenty-third.
That will be, yes, the twenty-third. Thank you.
I think the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, turn out the lights. We are adjourned.